I will call the meeting to order. I'll ask if you can stand if you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on something not on tonight's agenda? Come on down. You're the next. Welcome.
Hi. So, on behalf of Middleborough Student Council, we just wanted to thank you guys all for all the hard work you do for our school and everything. So, we got you guys some gifts and we just wanted to say thank you and we really appreciate everything you do.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you, best. Well, thank you all. We appreciate it. You're all more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
That's our gift to you.
That's our gift to you. Next up on our agenda is discussion items and Talia.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, for the MECC for past events, the MECC students enjoyed another week of STEAM organized by the Celebrations Committee. In technology classes with Mrs. Iverson, students are learning the basics of coding and learning to use B-bots. Each day of STEAM Week, students learn to problem solve by making a hypothesis and testing their thinking through inquiry-based, hands-on activities. And the kindergarten celebrated the 100th Day of School on Tuesday, February 11th, and engaged in various mathematical concepts related to making 100. The high school interns interested in teaching started working with our teachers and have been a wonderful addition to the school. For upcoming events, MECC teachers are engaging in identifying what skills related are to the five social-emotional learnings in their preschool and kindergarten students and to be able -- what they need to know and to be able to do by the end of the year. This is an ongoing process as we learn more about the importance of embedding SEL strategies throughout our teaching practices. For the MKG for past events, the MKG Drama Club was successful in hosting the play, sorry, Seucicle Kids on Friday, January 31st. For HBB for past events, HBB teachers visited Harrington Elementary School in Lexington on February 7th. They partnered with Harrington School in an effort to learn from each other in the area of social and emotional learning. And parent-teacher conferences were hosted on February 11th and 12th. For upcoming events, the next round of after-school clubs will begin shortly and sign-up sheets will be sent out. For the Nichols Middle School for past events, the NMS was successful in hosting the first Massasoit Math Meet on January 24th. For Middleborough High School for past events, on February 1st, members of student council attended the MASCE Unified Dance at the Special Olympics Headquarters in Marlboro. This is an event to celebrate inclusion. All the student council members in attendance had an amazing time. Winter Ball was hosted on Saturday, February 8th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. in the MHS Gym. On Monday, February 10th, Powder Tough Volleyball was very successful as the boys took the place of the girls. Congratulations to the winning team from the class of 2022. This week has been a spirit week leading to the vacation, Monday being Shine Bright Monday, then Extraterrestrial Tuesday, Wacky Wednesday, Thursday was America Day, and Friday is Perfect Pair Day. And today, Friday, February 13th, MHS Student Council hosted their annual Flower Day where student council gifts everyone a flower and gives students and staff a chance to buy flowers for others. And for upcoming events, tomorrow, February 14th, the Nothing But As Breakfast will be hosted to celebrate the students who have obtained all As during the first semester. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tal. Does anyone have any questions, Tal? It got off easy tonight, Tal. Does any member of the school committee have anything they wish to make a comment about? Mr. O.
I'm friends with some folks on Facebook that have young kids that did the 100 celebration thing, and some of those pictures were hilarious. Some of them did a really nice job with that.
Any other questions? Mr. Sheenman.
Just want to give a shout-out to the Girls Cross Country, Girls Track Team All-Stars, Tristan Gomes, Kaitlin Swanson, Shay Gallagher, Sofia Rodriguez, and Julie Carrington. And, boys, I'll be a little nepotism here, but, boys, Michael Netlich, Nightlick, and Paul Givenoni were named All-Stars as well, and Kaitlin Swanson was also named the South Shore League MVP. And many of these folks are going to be racing on Saturday morning in the divisionals, so good luck.
Great job. Brian, where are the divisions?
Reggie Lewis Arena.
That's what I thought, but I figured that out. Anybody else have any questions or comments they wish to bring up? Thank you again for coming, guys, and we appreciate the gifts. Thank you. Then I'll turn it over to Mr. Cuttino. Mr. Cuttino, you are welcome to come up. Good evening, Frank.
Good evening. I don't really have a whole lot. Everything's moving along pretty well. Started new semester up at the high school. I have your daughter. We had our first test today. I think she did pretty well. I actually have already graded it, so they'll be getting the scores tomorrow. Try to get it done as fast as I can, so I don't really have much of anything else.
Any questions for Frank? Frank, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Then I will turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. My first agenda item this evening is an annual presentation that I get to do as superintendent of schools. Each superintendent in Massachusetts across the Commonwealth gets to name one senior student from the senior class body who represents academic excellence and overall excellence in the school and the school community. So, I'd ask Mr. Paul Brandigan to come down for just a quick second here. As usual, with any effort at the high school, I rely heavily on Mr. Paul Brandigan to help me out, sitting down with him and going over sort of the qualifications that I'm looking for with this, and Paul Brandigan knows his students best, it's safe to say. And I asked him to share a couple of notes about our recipient this evening, and, Mr. Brandigan, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. When Mr. Lynch had approached me about this award this year, it was not even a moment to pause to know who the recipient needed to be for this year, and that was Jade. If you want to have somebody who has fully embraced the high school experience and has led in theater and in leadership and athletics, in music, the arts, she has done it all. And she leads with grace. She is unbelievably academically driven. One of her proudest accomplishments is that in two of her AP courses, she scored fives on both. She's a captain of the majorette team, she's captain of the tennis team, she's an officer in student councils, she's the concert master in the orchestra. If you name it, she's done it. And what is so amazing about Jade is the fact that there is always a part to her where she just wants to give back to someone else and pay it forward. And I think that's really just part of really the foundation of really what this award is about, but also, I think, one of the biggest ideals of being a Sachem, and I think if you watch Jade in action in our building, it is really just tremendous to see. And I think she's so deserving of this award, so when I had shared some information about Jade with Mr. Lynch, he agreed, which I was quite happy with, and I think you have a wonderful recipient of this award this year.
And she's here this evening, so I would welcome Jade to come on down. I had a chance to sit and meet with her the other day. And I would tell you, it's not the easiest last name to pronounce, but it's Jade Almodovar.
Yeah, Almodovar, yeah.
Almodovar, okay. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're an outstanding student from everything that Mr. Brandigan has presented. I had a chance to meet with you the other day and sit down and talk to Mr. Pittsley about all that you've accomplished in the music department. I had a chance to talk to you about your interest at USC.
Yes.
And some of the things you want to do. Can you talk about how you see yourself in five years or where you see yourself in five years?
Well, in five years, hopefully, I will be graduating or just graduated from college. I want to major in biomedical engineering, so I'm hoping to get involved in that field somehow, and hopefully, at a college I love. Right now, USC is looking pretty good, but I have to interview for a scholarship, so we'll see how it goes.
So, what does mom think about you traveling across the country to go to school?
What do you think, mom?
She's real proud of her. She's ready to spread her wings, so I'll support her in any way.
Great.
Three thousand miles is not her favorite part of it, but the rest of it.
Now, do you have to go out there for an interview, I understand, and go through that process?
Yeah. On March 2nd, I'm flying out there, and it's a panel interview, so I meet with an admissions counselor, and I meet with somebody from the school I got accepted to, and I meet with a current student.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So, congratulations and thank you for all you've done so far for Middleborough. We still have kind of a half a year left.
Yes.
Look forward to the rest of the year. Lots to celebrate, but congratulations to Jade, this year's recipient of the Superintendent Certificate of Academic Excellence from Middleborough Public Schools.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Brandigan. And parents are here this evening? Mom's here? Awesome. Congratulations. Anything else to say, mom? You proud of your daughter?
Actually, I would like to thank Bren and the entire Middleborough Public Department's amazing, amazing support and support for these kids, and I couldn't be more happier that she graduated from us.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And moving on, my next item on my bulletin this evening is pupil personnel services update, excuse me, Ms. Carolyn Lyons. I'd invite Carolyn Lyons to come on down. As you know, she's our pupil personnel services director.
Just give me a minute. I want to make sure I pull my slides up for you to see.
Extremely competent professional who does a great deal of work for us and is great at what she does, as you know.
Thank you. Let me just log in. Sorry, I should have done this beforehand.
Just yell if you need some technical assistance.
Look at it.
Make sure Mr. Pelletier is close by.
I nervously emailed him, actually, already. All right, where is it?
The reason why I'm wearing a hat tonight, I didn't say this earlier, but I should have, is that the half-day-half-day to help raise money for the Family Resource Center in the memory of Mark Mobley, who passed away recently, and that's kind of why I'm wearing it, and yeah.
And, Mr. Chair, through you, tomorrow is that the principals all get together and decided that their half-day hat day or release day, early release day, would benefit the Family Resource Center in the name of Mark Mobley. Brittany Silva at the MKG, I got together with a number of other colleagues and printed up some hats for the technology department. Mark Mobley was famous for wearing a hat during the day, and so they made up the hats with the M for the Middleborough in front and the Mobes on the front for Mark Mobley. That was his, that's how he was lovingly referred to, Mark Mobley. So, that's tomorrow. The family had decided that any financial benefits that came as a result of people wanting to donate would go to the Family Resource Center, and the school principals all got together and decided this was a worthy cause, and that's tomorrow. So, thank you, Brian, for noticing that. I was going to bring that up later, but it was a good time to do it. Thank you.
All right. So, on that note, my slides are up. Hopefully, you got them earlier this week. So, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about a whole array of items for pupil personnel services. That includes professional development, some of the program evaluations and other ongoings of the department. The first thing I want to talk to you about is tiered focus monitoring. I want to make sure you can hear me. Tiered focus monitoring is actually the new iteration of the Coordinated Program Review. So, we used to call it CPR. It's now called DFM. And this process was revised at the state level, and the desire was to come in more frequently and ask less each time they come, instead of coming, you know, in visits spaced further apart with, you know, a tremendous amount to produce each time. So, this is our first go-around with tiered focus monitoring, and it coincides with our, what would have been our mid-cycle review. So, coordinated program review used to happen every six years, and then every three years you'd get a mid-cycle review. So, this process acknowledges that we're not going to go through the whole process again. It's some shortened version. In this case, it's called a tier review. So, this will include both the special education aspects and the civil rights aspects. So, the self-assessment is due this May, and we'll have an onsite visit in the 2021 school year. We don't yet know that date. They reach out in the summer and kind of let us know, and we certainly prepare for that as well. The special education self-assessment includes student record review, which for us is six records, and it's looking at the discipline of students with disabilities. So, how do we acknowledge process? How do we guarantee rights to that population at a time that they're the subject of discipline? And then a document review of 12 different indicators. So, I asked the question, you know, when they pitched tiered focus monitoring, they indicated that your previous performance would inform how they ask in a subsequent visit. And if you remember correctly, at our last coordinated program review, there were no areas of even partial compliance. We were fully compliant in all areas. So, they told me kindly that our indicators are standard. So, the 12 indicators they're seeking are something they ask at every tier review. So, that looks at child find, how we identify students that are not yet identified with disabilities, licensure of all sorts of staff, special ed staff, related services, every type of licensure, my licensure, that sort of thing. Professional development, they want a full recitation since they've last been here. What have we been up to? What have we been doing? What topics have we been covering? Discipline. And then institutional program evaluation. So, looking at our special education programs and, you know, asking what we've been doing with them. Are we shaping our programs to meet the changing needs of students? The civil rights assessment includes just a document review. There's no student records, but there's 17 different indicators included in that. So, that involves things like translations when we have communications with our community, if we're translating documents for families that have, you know, language needs other than English. Student handbooks, they're looking at, you know, if we are uniformly applying our principles across all five buildings. Bullying prevention, so our bullying prevention plan will be under review, and, you know, how we're tackling not just bullying, but cyberbullying, investigations pertaining to bullying. Re-engagement efforts for students who withdraw prior to graduation, and that is the area that was previously cited for civil rights, so I expected them to ask about that. Curriculum, and then also self-evaluation. So, those processes are currently underway as well. We'll also form a press release, which will, you know, communicate with the community openly about when they're coming, making families aware that they may be consulted. Same with our CPAC. Our CPAC is consulted as part of the onsite visit, so the press release will be forthcoming in the coming year. Any questions about tiered focused monitoring before I move on? Okay. So, now I'll move on to some special education updates. I like to break them at least at levels so you can kind of see and hear what's going on in the special education department. Unified sports has been really a very warmly received, successful venture here in the district. It's expanded to track and basketball. I think it's a really big, proud moment for our community, and I really, honestly, Principal Brandigan, Ryan Sylvia, they've both been really influential along with Jennifer Healy in seeing these ventures come to fruition and they continue. There's new PD opportunities. I'll be talking about PD at length later in this presentation, but there are two that were high school-focused in particular, and one was on social and emotional professional learning community. So, I'll talk at length about that because this is a new design where we engaged other area communities to sit with like staff and unpack some of the issues that are facing, you know, not just districts, but students. And then also, our presentation is going to be tomorrow on 688 referrals and the changing services of the Mass Rehab Commission. So, the way it works in the world of special education is that you're eligible until you receive a diploma or you turn 22. State agencies pick up from there for a select population of students. So, Mass Rehab Commission has expanded their services, and the free services that are now offered to families as students transition into post-secondary and adulthood has really grown quite a bit, even in the last five years. So, I'm really excited about that presentation, and that's something very specific to the high school. As you recall, we have a new registered behavior technician here on staff, so this is another venture. Our registered behavior technician, who works under our BCBA, Board Certified Behavior Analyst, has a presence in all five buildings in the district, which has really made a big difference in our looking at student behavior, conducting functional behavior assessments, reviewing behavior intervention plans, and really trying to maintain students in the classroom setting rather than them being excluded for behaviors we don't want to see. Another district-wide initiative that we launched this year was Wilson Training for Wilson Reading. The literacy initiatives in the district are very robust, and what, you know, the Leslie model has been a really big win at the elementary level. What we talked about as a special ed department was really that tier-three intervention, what was missing. And what we discovered was that it's probably been 10 years or so since we've had anyone trained in either Wilson or Orton Gillingham or some other specially-designed intervention for reading. So, we designed a cohort, and they are finishing their Wilson training this spring, and we trained representatives in every building. So, with a little bit of investment from our grant money from the state, that's what we used, and we trained one teacher at the high school. We also had an initiative that we started over the summer for curriculum alignment. We have programs in the district for students who have a host of needs but are not always diploma-tracked. So, the curriculum has to be modified for these students, and there's a lot of discussion about how do those programs fold into each other and what's the essential skill set we want these kids to develop by the end of K, and then again by the end of grade five, and then again by the end of grade eight. You know, so to do that, we brought all these special education teachers together. The special ed coordinators facilitated this in conjunction with Dr. Melanie Gates and myself, and the curriculum was aligned so that you could see a progression of skills with a heavy emphasis on independent living, which was really, you know, the first of its kind. It was started over the summer and lasted into the fall, and I anticipate picking that back up again this coming summer. So, that's at the high school. At the Nichols Middle School, we ran that PLC that I'll talk a little bit more about later, the social-emotional PLC. We ran a middle school cohort and a high school cohort, and I've actually been overseeing the middle school cohort. So, we have one more meeting, which will take place in May. There was also specially-designed professional development on behavioral intervention that I designed and presented to the building here in November, specific concrete strategies about how to intervene, and I think it went well. Principal Thomas worked on it with me, and, you know, together we unpacked that. In March, we will be doing a new PD, which we did contract out for with some specialists on selective mutism. So, selective mutism is something that's low incidence. We don't see it a lot in our population, but we've seen it enough that it warrants specially-designed training, especially something that you don't see every day. So, that's coming. The registered behavior technician also has a major presence at the Nichols Middle School, and again, it's really a function of shouldering that burden and also assisting teachers who wouldn't ordinarily have the skill set to address behavior. We are also involved in a social-emotional program review. I'm working in collaboration with the Reed's Collaborative. Reed's is our local collaborative, right here in Middleborough, and they have a couple of different programs, but one of the programs that Reed's runs is actually housed within a high school in West Bridgewater. So, we were looking at our social-emotional programming and talking about what makes that program so successful, so that really, the concept is to model it right after the program that other students are tuitioning into. So, we're actually in the middle of doing that right now. We're looking at schedules and how we can make some adjustments in order to better meet the needs of those students. Nichols is also part of the Wilson Training. Our language-based teachers are being trained if they don't already have the training. One teacher already had the training, same with at the high school level. So, there are two language-based teachers here in this building, and now that teacher will also be Wilson-trained. The curriculum alignment spans the Ames Program, so just to go back to that, that includes programs at the pre-K level, the K level, our RISE programs at the Mary K. Good, and then our Ames programs, which are at the Nichols Middle School and the Middleborough High School. I put the complex together because a lot of the initiatives overlap. They're very much working on similar initiatives. At the complex, what you're seeing is tier-one response to social and emotional needs and structuring specific support for students with those SEL-based needs. So, what that means in the world of intervention, when you think of tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three, you're talking about response to intervention. So, tier-three is completely special education. Tier-one is what's happening in a general education classroom when students are demonstrating need. So, the complex is really working at beefing up that skill set to intervene in an earlier time. They're also vertically aligning their writing. What they're doing specifically with MCAS, you can submit a graphic organizer that's accepted by the state to assist students in structuring their written response. And what they're doing is training all the students in grades three through five on the same organizer. This means that for especially special education students who can sometimes struggle to learn different documents, they're going to use a very consistent document all the way through. At the same time, the teachers continue to be working on developing that understanding of how language processing impacts the writing process. So, again, it's helpful to give kids tools to learn how to write, but it's even better if you understand part of what's breaking down the writing process. The special ed teachers are continuing to collaborate through their own PLC process, the professional learning community, and they're doing that to provide specially-designed instruction to meet those reading needs through the Leslie literacy model. One of the things they're working on is a vertical alignment of assessments of reading so that the kids are being assessed at reading levels the same way through the grades. And then, once again, they're also being trained in Wilson, so our language-based teacher at the Berkland will be trained in Wilson. Actually, there's teachers at both the Mary K. Good and the Berkland who are being trained. At the Mary K. Good, we're still seeing and completing MCAS alt portfolios for identified students, and I can share with you, actually, that Kim Redlon, who is our MCAS alt trainer, was just asked to be a grader of the MCAS alts at the state level. So, that is something that they ask people to do only once they've kind of demonstrated their proficiency, so we're tremendously proud of Ms. Redlon. They were part of the curriculum alignment, as I said. And then the Memorial Early Childhood Center. If you remember, we added a position this year to address the growing enrollment needs and the growing needs of the student population at the MECC. And what I can tell you is that the new position has largely addressed K-based needs. So, I was just actually talking with the coordinator, Ms. Deutschman, today, and ultimately, in looking at numbers in terms of special education and identification, the numbers are up, they're basically double what they were last year at this time. So, when we brought in this position, I think the hope was that it would be a fluid position that could address both pre-K and K-needs, and it really has not lent itself. The person in this position is carrying an entire caseload just based on K-based needs identified through the CST process, the Child Study Team process, and just having kids get their feet wet as kindergartners here in our district. The other initiative that's going on at the MECC is that a whole cohort in the pre-K has been participating in the DESE Early Childhood Special Education Institute, which looks at those transitions not only into pre-K but also K. And what's interesting, I think most people don't realize, is when children are transitioning into pre-K, this is happening through home visits. It's not happening necessarily at just a meeting at the school. It starts way before that. So, a lot of this training actually looks at exploring our cultural responsiveness to the changing needs of any community, challenging our notions of implicit bias, and some really kind of heady stuff, to be honest with you. So, you know, this institute, which was completely driven by DESE, has been already very, I think, well-received, and because we were able to send an entire team, I expect to kind of hear big things coming out of that. The family engagement piece at the MECC can't be understated enough. It's our family's first opportunities to meet us, and it's really important to not just me, but everybody else in my department, that our families feel welcome and that this is a place where they can ask questions and... is a place where they can ask questions and learn who we are and what we're about. And as I said, they were also part of that curriculum alignment. So, program evaluations. The reason we look at program evaluation is really to determine whether or not the programs we're running are continuing to meet the needs of our changing population. It's also something that tiered focus monitoring, previously coordinated program review, asks us about. I told you when we first started this process that most districts pay for this. They contract out for this particular service. I have not done that very deliberately, in part because of the staff that we have here in the district, in the special ed coordinators, and because I think that, you know, we have an inherent ability to look at our own situation, take stock of what we're doing, and make some judgments about whether or not we need to adjust. So, in the social-emotional programming example at the Nichols Middle School, I've contracted with Reeds, but we're working hand-in-hand with them. So, instead of just farming it out and spending some money, you know, there's been a lot of time expended by the administration at the Nichols Middle School as well as special education in improving that program. The civil rights component of tiered focus monitoring will also require a program evaluation. So, that's currently underway, and as is the pre-K program evaluation and Ames program evaluations. So, the state will have plenty to read when they come in and want to see kind of what we think about how we've been doing. And then, my favorite topic is always professional development. So, there's a lot that's going on and a lot that continues to go on. Our inclusive special education co-teach model is alive and well. This is built from the work that we really created around the district consultant, Dr. Deborah Harris. The RISE Training is something that happens. It's a four-day training for teachers who co-teach, which stands for Revitalizing Inclusive Instruction for Students and Educators, and it's conducted by our in-district coaches. So, that's Ms. Jennifer Hilli and Ms. Kim Redlon. This continues to be well-received. I get really positive feedback every year, and it's something we even talk about at the Staff Strong Orientation Program because it's helpful when you have new staff to kind of tell them a little bit about the initiatives and what our department really, like what we are, what our philosophy is on education. So, speaking of the Staff Strong Orientation Program, I continue to partner with Dr. Gates. We'll be doing that again in the future. We conducted multiple presentations on special education, Aspen's our platform, our electronic platform, IEPs with a specific focus on what the role of the general educator is in that process, inclusive practices, and then we always do a presentation on procedures and civil rights. In summer of 2020, we'll see the addition of paraprofessional training in handbooks because that continues to be an area of desired focus. It actually was a focus, it was one of the goals, I think I'll get to it on the next slide, for training as well this year. So, we talked, I already kind of told you about the vertical alignment of our specialized programs. What I'd like to do is repeat that with all of our programs that are aligned. So, our social-emotional programs are aligned as well, and it'd be nice to compare those same standards and make sure that, you know, the left hand is handing off to the right hand correctly. There's ongoing restraint training by the special education coordinators at all levels. We use safety care at the elementary level through grade five. This year, we added additional techniques. You have to go and get specially-trained to do them. Dr. Mansfield was kind enough to agree to go and learn the new techniques, and so she's been training staff as we go. And then CPI at the secondary level. I do forecast at some point switching all to safety care, but I need to make sure I have enough trainers. The difference, there's a slightly different approach, even though they're both endorsed, but the biggest deal right now in terms of making that switch is that safety care requires that you train in smaller numbers. So, it's more labor-intensive. So, what's attractive about CPI is that you can train larger groups of people at once, and it is daunting to get all, you know, all these people to be trained can't be in a classroom at the time they're getting this training.
That's been a fundamental change recently with the department over what you're allowed to do in restraint and what you're no longer allowed to do in restraint.
Correct. Both are still accepted. CPI, in a lot of ways, was the gold standard, and I see safety care becoming like the new gold standard, but we've had safety care for a while, so we were ahead of that curve. We targeted the younger students with that model. Okay, so, I really wanted to tell you more about this community-based professional learning community. So, a lot of districts have social-emotional programming, and a lot of districts face the same problem. Once students are in these programs, whether they experience hospitalization or rates of progress that are not satisfactory, the question then becomes, do these students require an out-of-district placement? So, it can be trying because often you're working with hospital settings who have their own idea of what these students need. Hospitals don't do a good job of returning students back home with appropriate supports in place in order to assist them. So, I think families get, you know, sort of caught up in this at a time when they're most afraid of what's happening. So, we pulled this together to sort of put our collective heads together. There were, we have a cross-section of communities that participated. BR was there, Silver Lake was there, and I'm forgetting others, but I had six or seven districts come. We divided the cohorts, one into high school and one into middle school, and we've touched on a variety of topics, everything from, you know, how to receive a student back from hospitalization, what's effective, what's not, how to work with outside providers, what are best practices, right up into what is the role of related service in these programs. It's had lively discussion. It's been, I think, really time well spent. We've created listservs so that now we've created communities where these people can go and ask each other questions. And again, something I'd like to see roll out. I think sometimes, as districts, we are facing the same problems, and we're a little bit siloed because, you know, we're only one school district, but through contacts that I've made within our community, it's been really helpful to pair, you know, teachers of our emotional programming at the middle school or the high school with people who do that in other communities every single day because typically, there's only one or two of them here. So, just a nice way to sort of tackle the same issue with multiple brain power. And then, the really cool part about this was that students in our specialized program actually got to practice their catering and culinary skills. They were able to go to the store and calculate how much they needed to spend, get the ingredients, prepare the food, they delivered the food, they dressed the table, and they got really nice feedback notes from everybody. It was, honestly, it was incredibly professional. The food was delicious, and it was really nice to see our students be able to participate in this process in a meaningful way and work on skills that they're going to need in their everyday life. So, paraprofessional training has been a big focus. It was a department focus this year. So, there were two different initiatives that we launched. One was the Viewing of Intelligent Lives, which is a documentary that was endorsed by DESE, and it really looks at how, when you're working with a student in a one-to-one scenario as a paraprofessional, how your role really is to guide that child to independence so that eventually that child can do what they need to do without you there, or at least with limited dependence on another person there. It's a big focus for us here in the district. So, we did a viewing and then very targeted questioning. We divided the paraprofessionals at elementary and secondary. So, Ms. Redlon, at the last PD day, had our secondary paraprofessionals, and I'll have them in May as we go over that. On March 3rd, there's a whole day of planned activities just for paraprofessionals, effective strategies to support students, and then a keynote speaker who's going to talk about her experience in education as someone who had a one-to-one and what that meant to her. So, I'm excited for that. I think the paraprofessionals will enjoy that training. It was designed specifically for them, with them in mind, and I think, you know, will fulfill that PD goal. Related services this year took a little different focus. In years past, we've really looked at how we have tackled what related services means in the educational context, how it differs from related services you might get in a hospital context. This year, I went a different way because it's really difficult to give meaningful PD to an occupational therapist or a physical therapist if you don't do it. So, that is the one thing, they're a little unique because there's, again, there's only one of them. So, in this case, we chose specialized and targeted training for those areas, including adaptive PE, which is technically not a related service. We also collaborated with Reeds, and I did contract with Reeds to come in and do ASL training for American Sign Language, and that's with Evelyn Rankin, and she'll be training, actually, her training continues tomorrow, but she will have seen a cross-section of all five buildings with a primer on ASL because deaf and hard-of-hearing needs is also a low-incidence population that we've seen a recent resurgence of. So, it's one of those populations you have to know about and train as kind of time permits. And then, Derek Thompson was influential in bringing in training through Spalding Rehab on feeding and swallowing therapies. So, we had that training for the nurses and speech and language pathologists very recently. So, what can I tell you about, oh, and then there's PPS-related training, which is outside of special education for the most part. I told you about the behavioral strategies from November. January of 2020, I had another 504 training where I had all the 504 coordinators, gave them up-to-date information. We've talked about our procedure manual. This coming month, there's training. I assembled a cohort for general educators to attend a training with one of our area collaboratives, Five Steps to Solving Student Behavior in the Classroom, just another way to broaden the toolkit. In March, I just finished assembling a small group for administrators to go have a legal training, which spans a wide variety of topics, especially with up-to-date cases, what the current trends are, and that's a cross-section of administrators across the district. And then, ongoing, last year, I designed training on FBAs and behavior intervention plans, and I've been unrolling that kind of slowly, but the secondary level has now seen that presentation, and I'll be moving to elementary next. Lots of behavior focus. So, summer projects, since no one likes when anyone's idle, there's some more pieces I wanted to tell you about. Every year, there's the special ed procedure manual gets updated. Things have to evolve with the times. Really, it's a document that has to be changed every single summer. The educational support personnel, the ESP manual, is something I'd like to finalize and release for our paraprofessionals. Everything from what our understanding of, you know, what we want out of professionalism all the way to strategies to use with students and data collection would be housed in a document like that. And then, I'm also working on another manual for civil rights and harassment, what steps to take in investigations. It's a document that I think would be helpful to have. And then, I'll be reviewing over the summer with Dr. Gates our mandatory trainings. So, every year in the fall, all personnel have mandatory trainings that we have to cover, and Dr. Gates and I will be kind of going through that with a fine-tooth comb and examining, is this exactly the language we like? Is there anything that needs to be updated, just as kind of like a healthy checkup? And then, the last thing I can tell you about is our CPAC, which I believe you've seen CPAC quite a bit. So, there are some fundraising efforts that are coming up. Rock Your Socks for World Down Syndrome Day will be on March 20th. That's when you wear whatever socks you want to demonstrate your individuality, and we celebrate that as a community. And then, Wear Your Blue for Autism, which will be on April 2nd. Upcoming events and meetings, unsurprisingly, our CPAC president was very excited about this Intelligent Lives DVD, and so, we partnered to have a private viewing. She said, you know, can I show it to families? And I think that's a great idea. There's certainly no reason to not show it to families. So, I'm going to be sharing also the questions that we kind of designed and the talking points to go along with the video, but that's coming up. I have the calendar on the next slide that I'll show you. And then, there, CPAC is sponsoring a kindergarten someone's special dance on April 3rd from 5:00 to 7:00 at the MECC auditorium. The last piece is something interesting. So, with the money that CPAC does have, they reached out and asked what would be a good way to give back to our community. And the idea that kind of came out of that collaboration was that they're soliciting requests from families for equipment or tools not covered by medical insurance for eligible residents. So, what would happen is they'd fill out a form, the parent would say what it is they're looking for, and submit it back, and then CPAC will basically take the money that they've raised and infuse it right back to the residents of Middle Borough. So, hopefully, this will work if I do this right. You can see their events calendar here. And I just wanted to tell you, I didn't have the date of the Intelligent Lives movie event. That's March 27th. Let's see. Their next monthly meeting is on March 2nd from 6:00 to 7:00 in the MECC auditorium. In case you want to attend, you're more than welcome to. I'm at the meetings every chance I get. And I think that's it.
Carolyn, can you talk to us about, in everything that you outlined? No, I mean, in the sense that you have to be up-to-date too. So, how do you keep yourself up-to-date?
On what?
No, I just meant, you know, trends and the things that you have to, I mean, you have to be on top of.
Well, there's a lot. I still follow all the laws. I'm pretty much an avid reader of anything that happens at our Supreme Court level, our state court level, and then the BSCA. I'm conversant in those, so I kind of stay on top of that. I go to regional meetings for area special education directors. DESI recently revived it, and it's been really great because Russell Johnston, who's kind of, I would describe him as the state's special education director, but that may not be fully accurate, he gives us updates on all different topics. And some of the ideas that I have, like Intelligent Lives, came right from him. So, that's one of the ways I stay on top of that. Anytime DESI offers a webinar or any type of training, I make myself available because if it's important at the state level, then it should be important to us. And then, beyond that, I'm involved in several groups as well in our area. So, I sit on the board for special ed administrators for the Reeds Collaborative and then the operating committee for the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. The reason those groups are so valuable is because, one, we're members of the collaborative, but, two, many of the members are very seasoned directors. So, you really get exposure to people who've done this for a long time. You can kind of model, in a lot of ways, some of the issues. We're dealing with a lot of the same issues. So, you get to bounce those ideas off of each other. And then, lastly, I'm part of a social ed directors group, like a job-alike, where we all get together, network, talk about professional development that's compelling. Honestly, we compare notes. There's a lot of really great things. So, that's how I try to stay up-to-date on it.
Lots of trainings also in Circuit Breaker and Extraordinary Relief.
Oh, yes.
Number of other important pieces that are coming up.
I did forget about financial training. There's a lot of financial training that comes out of the state, and I definitely attend all of the financial training.
Does anyone have questions for Carolyn? Right.
Couple of observations that can, well, a lot of observations when I listen to you speak about different things and your excitement. I like this, that you're putting together manuals, and I like the fact that we self-evaluate and we do paperwork versus hiring somebody. You're doing stuff here in-house, which is very specific, but it could be, I hope you're sharing with other people too because I think that some of these pieces are phenomenal and these, I hope you share them. I don't know.
Yeah, I do.
You share them out, and maybe you get feedback from them, and we tweak because you tweak those little pieces, and before you know it, we've got these great tools. And then, that internal training with Ms. Redlon, phenomenal. Just, I know people who have had interactions with Ms. Redlon, and everything comes back. The most unbelievably awesome person they've ever, and they almost feel.
She's excellent.
They feel better when they get done. I look at those things. When I think of what goes on with special education here in our district, I think we're almost second to none in the area because I've had more people say how, I don't have people calling me saying, there's problems, and this is what I like. And I know that part of it is you, but your staff. And then, like you said, when you're doing your internal program evaluation and you're doing it yourselves, you're open to say, hey, I'm doing this wrong maybe, or maybe, how can we do it better? If you hire somebody, they're just going to, they're going to give you back what you just told them. That's all they're, they're not really going to give you those hard ones. You guys do it yourselves. And I think that's the key to the success that you lead in the department.
Thank you. I'm really, really lucky. The staff in this district are second to none. That's everywhere, that's from paraprofessionals to teachers to related service providers. I only scratched the surface of it in the beginning of my role, and I feel like I collect new reasons every day, including the coordinators, who are by far and away the most impressive group I've met.
Best money we've ever spent, hands down, hands down. Thanks for that recommendation because I think it came that way, so.
We mentioned professional development. Carolyn mentioned professional development. I know that she's appreciative of that 184th day for ESPs.
Yes.
Because it allows her to have all the ESPs in one room for a full day to really do focus professional development, which is, I don't know, beyond measure when it comes down to, because it's so important. The ESPs are such an important piece of the puzzle.
It's time well spent.
That 184th day, and we always appreciate of the school committee being agreeable to that as part of negotiations, so.
Hi.
Hi. It's exciting to hear all the stuff that you guys are working on, especially where almost every slide in here was some sort of like new innovation that you guys are coming up with or more training, so it's good to hear. I was kind of curious if you could help me understand, what are the most common reasons why we have to send kids out of district for special needs?
Okay, great question. Well, it depends on if they, so, we have a percentage of students who move into our community in, you know, their families buy a house here, and they're already in an out-of-district placement. So, for that percentage of students, they're entitled to what's referred to as a stay-put placement. So, if they've already been outplaced by another community, we don't have So if they've already been outplaced by another community, we don't have the ability to say, come try our programming first. So there's a very large percentage of our current out-of-district caseload that meets that criteria. There are other students in our district that have a wide variety of needs, and I would really divide it into two groups. We have children in our community who are so unique that we could never provide the level of training that we would need in order to meet those needs. Very low incidence disabilities, very global disabilities, ranging in need and breadth. So when we can't meet their needs and basically provide them with access to that general ed curriculum, even with all the modification, that's ultimately when it's time. And then the last group, I would put into the social-emotional category, it's why you hear so much of a focus on not just training of special ed staff, but general ed staff. By far and away, in the last, call it 10 years, almost always the reason students are going out of district, way more than any other reason, has to do with chronic and repeat hospitalization, suicidality, self-harm, I mean, these are very serious safety concerns, and that's one of the reasons why we have these programs, and one of the reasons why they need to be calibrated, because the stakes are very, very high when you have a youngster who is experiencing suicidal ideation. So I would say that's probably the best way I could, I mean, it really is different in every case, so it's kind of hard to give you a broad brush view, but that's about as good as I could probably do it.
Great. And Mr. Chair, if I could ask a follow-up. When we do have to send students out of district for things that, you know, we don't have the capabilities to do here, where are some of the common places that we send them?
Well, they're divided, it depends on what type of placement. There are public placements, those are the collaboratives that I talked about, and then there are private placement. REEDS, REEDS and Pilgrim Area Collaborative are the highest incidence of the public placements we've done. Private placements, I don't have a lot of duplications, because if the student is going out to a private placement, either they moved in with the placement, or the need was so specialized that we were seeking out something very specific. A lot of these placements specialize in community, in particular interventions. So for example, like the May Institute or Boston Hagashi School are both focused on the autism population, whereas, you know, the League School does something different, you know what I mean? So it kind of depends on what the disability is, and what the needs of the student are. We always match whatever the placement is to the needs, rather than any other way.
Sure. It sounds like that's what's in the best interest of the kids, so.
Absolutely.
Glad you answered that way.
Yeah.
One thing I think is important too, Rich, especially for out-of-district placements, is those rates are established by the state. So it isn't like one school gives us a price, then they give somebody else a different price. The state regulates the rates. They have to apply to the state, generates in three years, periods and times, sometimes longer, sometimes the state will say, we're not taking new rates. And so they have to apply and present why their rate should change, and that's a huge process for that individual placement.
And Mr. Chair, to piggyback on this, for the students that we have within our district that we have to send out to either the REEDS collaborative, we also reevaluate regularly to look back, to see when to bring them back, back to mainstream, the students back to our district, but we don't have as much of that ability if they move in with that placement.
Right. Well, regardless, you know, when you're looking at whether or not a student's appropriate for a less restrictive setting, you kind of have to wait for an appropriate time, and that frequently is during a transition. So if you know a child's moving from elementary to middle, or from middle to high school, those are always great times to reevaluate, but it's kind of hard to project that out, you know what I mean? You do test every three years, just like you would for any other eligible student, you're monitoring the placement. I frequently go, I conduct unannounced visits to some of our placements, just because, you know, it's a lot of money, and it's important to guarantee the appropriateness of the programming, whether or not the student attends school here in the district or anywhere else. But it's something that's very frequently on our minds. It's our desire to always have students attend school here in the district, if at all possible. It's their home community, they have a right to be educated here, and the least restrictive environment is actually a federal and state mandate. So when teams make these decisions, that's the lens that we have to use, what is the least restrictive setting in which they can access the curriculum?
And through you, Mr. Chair, we have, we belong to REEDS collaborative and Pilgrim Area Collaborative, and we have people on the board of directors, the superintendents are generally, or the PPS directors are usually on the board of directors of those groups, who make determinations about what it costs to send a student there. So there's buy-in from this board, this local board, and if they're raising the tuition, it's usually as a result of some budget increase that's needed within that collaborative, to provide other services, et cetera. So we have control over those. Places like the May School at Boston Hagashi, they make their own determinations and have to go through the sort of checklist, but we have more control over some of the more local collaboratives that we belong to, so.
Just one last question. I know that we are always trying to do kind of the most we possibly can with the funds that we have available, and I wondered if there was some magic pot of money that we were to find somewhere. Is it even, does it even make sense for us to, given what you said with the low, kind of low incidence, or like the global issues that we send students out of district for, does it even make sense for a school district like Middleborough to try to bring some of those services in-house, or are they so specialized and so expensive that only institutions that specialize in those things can do it?
Well, I mean, that's a good question, it's a philosophical question, right? It's the question of, do we build programs in order to keep kids in, or do we kind of draw the conclusion that we're not going to be able to meet that need, and so kind of tighten our belt? Unfortunately, you really can't know that at the outset, because needs are so individualized. I'll answer that, though, for the population of students with social-emotional problems, or social-emotional disabilities, I should say. We have beefed up that programming, really, across the district, and I think, I happen to think that's money well-spent. The thing about mental health, and the thing about emotional disabilities, is that they are lifelong, and many of us live with them, and all adults, all humans, need to navigate their setting regardless of what their disability is. So out of all those areas, the social-emotional realm is the realm where I feel like the public school system has kind of the biggest opportunity, because students need to generalize to live in our world, so what better way to spend our money than to create flexible opportunities? That's when it becomes difficult. Sometimes, you know, kids are facing situations that require intense flexibility, and any American public school system is not always great at being flexible. There's a lot of constraints against every building, including things like the MCAS exam, among other things. So that's what kind of is at odds, but I tend to believe that the more you invest in those programs, the better the dividend. Because when you think about it, if one student goes out of district, it's very costly. So if, you know, if you can save even one student, it actually has kind of a profound impact on the entire budget. Especially if you're employing teachers that are doing other things all day, you're going to get the added benefit, you know what I mean? They wouldn't just treat one student, they'd be, they'd be working with a whole host of students.
If I could add to that, Rich, too, I mean, when I first started on the school committee in another town in the 90s, alternative high schools were just starting. Only big systems had alternative high schools. And now, pretty much every system that I can think of has some form of an alternative high school in their system for that reason, which is, they realized how much it was to send kids outside, and what they did. The other thing, too, I would say, for collaboratives, if you think about it this way, is the School Street School is used by the REEDS collaborative, and so now, the kids who go there are staying in town, as opposed to, a lot of times when the collaboratives were started, they weren't necessarily, they were maybe finding some classroom places and spaces in schools, but they were going out to buildings that weren't designed as classrooms, they were going out to buildings that were just designed to house, you know, program, to see if they could house a program there. And so that's sort of radically changed, too, and people have really worked hard to make sure that those are true classroom settings, as opposed to what they, you know, what they've been at the start.
Yeah, exactly.
And you've probably seen it, I haven't made it the entire time, but you've probably seen that we've been building capacity to keep students here. Because not just for the students who need the services, I think all students benefit from just being around with other people. I mean, I think that's the greatest piece of that. When I think of the pre-K program, when you have all students together, working together, that's the best piece of that. Because if you don't, if you don't see different people, you don't learn to work with other people.
And importantly, when students graduate, that's the world we live in, you know what I mean? We all navigate our communities, nobody, there's no identifying markers of any of us. So if we're talking about 21st century education and preparing students for the world, that goes part and parcel with it. Thanks.
Thank you, Caroline, appreciate it.
Thank you, Caroline. Mr. Chair, next to my report, Ms. Sarah Hickey, who is obviously not here, she's home ill, with a bad cold, slash, perhaps flu, really not feeling well at all, and tried to make the effort to be here tonight, but could not. I would tell you, was that? I don't believe, she has not been to China, no. She was planning on doing a little skiing next week, but that may be in jeopardy at this point. The first couple of items on her report, the FY20 budget shortfall and the budget update, I would tell you or share with you that myself and the budget subcommittee, along with Sarah Hickey and Dr. Melanie Gates, and various administrators, over the last sort of four Mondays, Tuesday, Monday, Tuesdays, have been working at length, addressing the shortfall, and looking at the budget for next year, looking at a serious amount of money that we're looking at, trying to figure out the $690,000 that was mentioned at the last meeting, looking at all the budget line items that we've frozen. We still have a ways to go, probably a couple meetings, but we think that we're looking at different pockets of money and line items that were frozen, so that we can reduce that $690,000. We're also looking at extraordinary relief applications, obviously, and circuit breaker applications, they were trying to, we will try to address, but those are very specific formulas. They certainly help those districts that have really high-money placements, the $300, $400,000 placements, as opposed to the smaller-money placements, and if you have a lot of smaller-money placements, it doesn't make a big difference, unfortunately. And I've talked about this with Mr. Jivononi the other evening, the building committee, that it sometimes doesn't seem fair, how the formula works. However, we'll live within the formula and do the work, and I know that Caroline Lyons will do the work, along with Sarah Hickey, and hopefully we'll get some relief through that venue. We'll also, again, look at every line item for this year, and plan for next year with the assumption that we'd still have these students in our, in our population, and that we need to budget for them. And in doing so, unfortunately, other things will, will have to go by the wayside, will not be included in the budget for next year, and some tough, very difficult decisions to be made in the next couple of weeks, and the budget hearings on February 27th, we won't have a lot of the specifics with regard to people, because that's not fair, because we still don't have final numbers, but we are looking at programs, we're looking at people, unfortunately. And we are a human resource industry, and most of our money is tied up with employees, and, but we're looking at everything we possibly can get out of every other line item, and still progress as a school system in a positive direction, and try to maintain class sizes, which are appropriately low, and so, moving on from there.
Sure. I mentioned this to you at the meeting the other night, Mr. Slakman Battistini and I did corner the governor the other night, and on Tuesday night, here in Middleborough, he was here, and flat out, I have advocated for just full, full recognition of rewriting the formula for special ed reimbursements. This $47,000 starting point that you have to come up with before you even ask for 75 cents on the dollar is a joke, and I said it to him, I think, pretty much that way, I think Mr. Battistini thought it was kind of funny the way I just threw it at him, but he's just like anyone else, he works for us. So he did have, he was talking about the formula, and his disappointment with the formula himself. So, don't know, I always say it, I talk to our legislators all the time about it, but it just, no one wants to really tackle, because it's so difficult, no one wants to really tackle it. And it's a shame, I'd love to see someone tackle it and really make it fair, and I'd like to see them respect the special ed piece, especially with these extraordinary costs, because at some point, we may not get, we may not qualify, and I'm worried about that.
And Mr. Chair, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the Student Opportunity Act, which has been voted in, is another area that is not sort of spread out evenly, as far as I'm concerned. We're getting the same additional money that we've received, this will be the fourth year, that we get an extra $30 a student, or about $90,000 as a district. When we have neighboring districts like Bridgewater-Ranham that are getting $150 a student, or thereabouts, we have Duxbury that's getting more than $30 a student, we have places like Hingham and Situate that are getting more per student than Middleborough, places like Abington considerably more. And there's a sort of a feeling that somehow that money through that opportunity grant was not spread out evenly by superintendents, and we're working to that end, but that there's not a lot of help there, because we had that $90,000 in our budget last year, and we were sort of counting on it for this year again, otherwise we would have had another $90,000. So, but it is one of those things that, those things that don't necessarily feel equitable when you're on the short end, and it certainly seems that way for these circuit breakers and extraordinary relief, and also the Student Opportunity Act, so.
Mr. Chair, with regards to these shortfalls, ever since I've been sitting on this board for the last nine years, looking at budgets, I think the budget has increased, the state portion of the budget, the amount of Chapter 70 money that we receive annually, has only increased about three-quarters of a million dollars, less than $100,000 a year. That's about what we've received. Now, granted, we went from a student population of 3,700 down to 2,700 at our low point, and now we're back up over 3,000. So, part of the reason is because we had a drop, and that's how the formula works, based on per pupil, but that used to be $25, and it went to $30, is a joke, and if it wasn't for the town for really stepping up and giving us more than 2% increase, when other budgets are getting 2% increases on their portion, for instance, we've gone from 17, 17.5 million from the state five years ago, to 18, 18,070,079, I think it is this year. So for in five years, we've seen an increase of just a mild increase, and it's really sad, but the town's going to try to help us with an eight, over 8% increase in the town portion, which has gone from about 12 up to almost 15 and a half million in the same time period. It's, we're thankful to the town, but at some point, my concern is, the town's going to say no more. I'm very concerned about that, so I've raised this concern in the past few years, I've been waiting for that point where all of a sudden they say, no more, but we've been fortunate to have good fiscal years, the economy's been well. I fear the downturn, if it occurs, but I'm glad that you guys, I feel bad for the budget subcommittee, you guys are doing an awesome job, because I know what you're going through, and I appreciate what you're doing. It's just a tough, tough situation, and I agree.
I don't speak for the budget subcommittee, but I would say that we pretty much agreed that we will definitely live within the means that the towns have provided us.
Thankfully.
And we'll have to make it work. And we'll sort of slim things down with the understanding that budget cycles are just that, they're cyclical, and occasionally, we're going to have these years, and we've had, since I've been here, we've had some good, positive years, and we've had some cuts that we've had to make, but we've also had some growth in personnel where appropriate. But this is one of those years where we're sure going to be certainly looking at less there, and looking to basically about a $1.5 million sort of number that we have to come up with, within our current budget for next year. So that's about where we're at, so. I don't know if any on the budget subcommittee has anything to add?
Yes, I just want to say a couple of things. One is, I want to thank Meg for stepping up. Greg had some issues, and Meg was able to stay up, step up and be a part of the budget subcommittee, so I really want to thank her for that. I just want to go over the pieces, so everybody understands where we're at. The first is this fiscal shortfall. This fiscal shortfall is entirely about, as Caroline said before, the stay-put movements that came into our community. We were able to adapt for those who moved in during the summer, we weren't able to adapt for those who moved in after the summer, and that became problematic. As Brian says, it's more than $690,000, because that doesn't factor in. As Brian says, it's more than $690,000 because that doesn't factor in the transportation costs. But we have been, it was more closer to a million dollars. We've been able to eat some of it and work with it. The superintendent and the business manager froze the budget in October. So there'll be additional resources that we can back down from that number. So it's sort of a placeholder right now for the annual special town meeting before the annual town meeting. So there's that piece. Secondly, we have to comply with our, sort of the budget, the way the budget is set up by the town. So that's why our hearings, February 27th, because that'll meet the requirements we need from them. But just so everyone knows, that week, we still have meetings. We're, if Sarah's around, we're going to try to meet next week. But if not, we're planning on meeting the Monday beforehand so we can send you over the budget. The budget hearing is really about accepting a number from, and giving that number to the town. It's our intention to give the town, the number that the towns asked us to take. And because we don't think the town can afford anymore. So that's what we're going forward with it, and we're going to make the budget work from that aspect of it. So there's been a couple of things that I think were real important and I should mention because they're helpful. For example, as people know, we still have to finish the stipend piece with the budget. And the superintendent and I and a couple of other people met with the union on Monday, and the unions agreed that they will not go up in stipends this year. So that's been very helpful, and we thank them for that. We still have a couple of things to work out on pieces, and we're going to work that out and get that particular piece done. As the superintendent said, we do have additional costs in salary and steps, but we also have additional costs, as we've mentioned before, for stuff that we've had to do because it made sense for our community, like the 184th day for PPS. That made sense, and that's going to help. Now, in addition to that, we know we have to add some pieces because we need it, especially for special ed in our district. But what we're going to have to do is cut some things out. And we'll begin making that cuts, but as we go forward with the budget process, we'll have more of a discussion as we go along. Because A, we need people to have conversations with staff and everything like that. And we've also talked to the union at the same time and talked to them about, we have to make some cuts so that they understood it and know what's coming. And we'll have additional conversations with them. As Brian said, it's cyclical. We haven't run into the cycle in a while. In the past, we were able to use funding that we had, especially for Medicare and Medicaid. That's, we've used all that over the summertime to sort of support the additional move-ins that came. This is, you know, this has nothing to do with anything but additional pieces. And as, you know, part of the reason that we're at good fiscal times in the town, for the most part, is because of new growth. But new growth means additional people moving into your community. And so it works both ways. So that's, you know, that's some of it. That's where we're at. As, you know, like we said, we'll hold the budget hearing. I had to approve the budget piece for the paper that we're required to do under the law. And so we'll hold that budget hearing. We'll try to go over everything and show where we're at. The vast majority of our money is spent on personnel. And just so everyone's aware, contractually, we have rules about when we can let go of personnel. We can't let go of personnel in August and October. It's not allowed under the terms of the contract. That's the way it works. So that's why we have to freeze, and that's why I have to look for additional pieces. I will say this, this is not something that we can sort of add away for a rainy day. It doesn't work that way. When these outside placements come, they come, and we have to deal with them, and the community has to deal with them. Again, the amount, you're going to see in some cases, amounts doubling in certain categories. We can't react to that within our budget. We have to seek additional funds. We're going to seek every single dime that we can get from the state. But as Brian points out, there's not a lot there from the state. And they don't fund it the way they should. And that's the sad reality. And that's not a knock on the governor or anybody because it's been this way through Democrats and Republicans. And they've all not funded this correctly. And time and time again, it just gets put off. And, you know, when you, when you say, the conversation that they try to say is, well, we fund 75% of that line item. And it's no. You find 75% of the line item as long, when it reaches a certain point. And the vast majority of our placements don't reach that point. We have additional placements this year. And as I said before, I mean, one of the other more difficult things is when we looked at the ages of where these placements are, these are placements that are still going to be in the system for a while. They are not, this is not a group of 12th graders that are continuing on and being done with their placement. These are kids in elementary school that will continue their placement for a while. So it's tough, but that's it. And Meg, did you want to say?
I know Sarah's not here, but Sarah has worked extremely hard the past couple of weeks on getting us all this information and really breaking everything down. I know myself personally, and I don't want to speak for Dr. Gates because she's not here, but we had a conversation about how we've never really in-depth looked at a budget that way. And so having Sarah, if we're asking her what a specific line item is, she could tell us exactly what that line item was. So that was very, very helpful. So that's kind of all I wanted to say.
Okay. Mr. Oak?
Just another round of thanks for the Budget Subcommittee. And thanks, Meg, for stepping up and joining that. It sounds like you guys have quite a task ahead of you guys. But I wanted to ask specifically about the difference in that amount where, you know, Middleborough has 30 and Bridgewater, Rainham has a, what was it? 150 or something like that. What is, what is the reason that we could be given such a small amount compared to other, per student, right? So I just don't get it.
There's a state threshold that they determine. It's, a lot of the money is going to larger gateway cities. But a lot of the money is going locally. But we're in that bank of communities that's getting the $30 a student, that's it. And we need to meet the threshold for additional monies from the Student Opportunity Act. So we haven't gotten a lot of explanations on it. But we've been, but what's been explained is that we did not meet the threshold that would get us over the $30 per student, so.
Mr. Chair, this came up with Mr. Battistini and I, and the exact words were, there hasn't been a lot of transparency in a lot of that. And when the question gets asked, why? Like you just asked Mr. Lynch, Mr. Lynch is saying the same thing. When Charlie Baker says it to me, that's even worse because he's saying the same thing. That group, they don't, they're not transparent enough to get the information out to us. And he, he's trying to do that as well, but it's just one of those things. It's very difficult because I wonder if anyone knows how the formula works other than they just punch it in and it just pops out a number.
Well, I think the important thing to talk about too is the line item in the budget that included the new funding formula didn't come until September, when the budget was supposed to be due in June. Now budgets, the budget hearings generally go into July. That's not surprising, but for something to go through September is really surprising. And so then, what had to happen was DOE had to put their funding formula together, essentially two months behind, in order to calculate what this would be. And so it's a very convoluted process that, you know, has started wrong from the start. And that, again, that goes to both sides, not just one.
And much of their $2 billion of excess revenue that the state had at the end of the year, which is like free cash for us, because they went so long, a billion of it's in the rainy day fund, which is not a problem. Because what happens, they statutorily lose portions of that money right into the rainy day fund. They were only able to spend a billion of it, but it didn't go here.
Right, and the other thing too is, it didn't, it didn't move forward. So the way the wording in the law was, was the additional funds would be over a period in time. It didn't set a yearly threshold that the budget had to increase by. And the reason they didn't do that, to be quite honest, is this. It's an election year coming up. So they wanted to make sure they included funding in additional things that were important to them, like senior citizens and aid to cities and towns and fire stations and things like that. And so they could still get away with giving additional funds for that without having to give the whole, without having to split the ball wax. So what will happen is, my, see, my guess would be, on off-election years, you will see bigger chunks of money go into schools, cities and towns for schooling than you will during election years. That's, I mean, that's the sad reality, and having been up there, I can understand it.
One of those things, I sat and had lunch with Joe Bietta, who's the superintendent Norton, who's been more vocal about this at $30 a student. But comparing similar communities and looking around, for example, Bridgewater and Rainham are very similar communities. They had $143 a student or thereabouts, 146. That's nearly $500,000 to that district, or would have been $500,000 to our district. It's more to their district because they have more students. But with 3,000 students in our district, that would have been almost $500,000 for us. We could have used that money, obviously. That offset to any, offset all of our expenses. But it just doesn't seem fair. But, and nothing's come out in terms of specifics with regard to that threshold, and we're still looking for answers, so. And as we get them, we'll relay, I'll relay them on to you.
Greg? When you say we didn't meet a threshold, what does that mean? Like what threshold are we not making?
There's a formula that, there are a whole bunch of communities that get $30 per student. And then gradually, these other communities like Duxbury and Bridgewater, Rainham, get more. So we're trying to figure out exactly what put them over the top. And we're not, I'm not getting answers. And Joe Bietta's been at it a little bit longer than me and trying to work with him to see what answers he's getting. And there's a group called the Just 12 Superintendents, and I've met with that group, and a lot of them are frustrated. Some are very happy.
Yeah.
But a lot of them are very frustrated, including myself.
Mr. Oak?
Mr. Chair, is there a, is there like a Subcommittee of Legislators, something that was tasked with coming up with this? Or who actually came up with the formula?
It was part of a bill. The bill was comprehensive, and the bill included, I'm going to say, at least 50 amendments that I'm aware of by the time it was finished. And now, remember two things. One, one goes to the House, and one goes to the Senate. And then the Joint Committee comes together, which are people appointed by leadership in both to iron out what's going to be in there and what's not going to be in there. And then it goes back to both respective houses as one bill to put together. So as, when people talk about transparency, nothing that goes on in the Joint Committee is, there's no minutes, there's nothing like that that occurs. So it's really the Joint Committee that puts together the bill because they have the final authority on it. And what it, generally speaking, is, in this particular case, it had less to do with the education sub-communities of both as opposed to the budget pieces that went together. The budget people that went together for that meeting.
Got it. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, there was a, there was a whole study of this done. Six years ago it started, they had hearings, they had public hearings. People, we sent a letter as a school committee.
And I attended one of those hearings.
Yeah, saying, yep. And it is what it is. And that's the shame of it, but hopefully next year will be a little better.
And the other piece that should be mentioned was, when this all started, it started with a particular senator who was the chair, she was the chair of the Senate Education Committee. She was replaced this year and taken off as chair of the Senate Education Committee and was replaced. So that was another factor that I think added to this problem. Because it was not as originally put together. Other questions?
Okay. I'll move on. A couple of additional notes under budget, under Sarah's report. She was going to present to you and you have in front of you or on your computers, the new rates as of January 1st for the salary for substitutes.
She made a slight mistake in the previous one, and that's why she gave us the new one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We don't do direct deposit, or is it because we have such a fluctuation? Is that the reason why we don't? Because they'd be the only non-direct deposit people we pay as a salaried employee or a...
I just think they, these folks are itinerant employees.
Okay, right.
That come in and might work one day, one week, and none the next week. So, but we do have direct deposit for pretty much all of our employees that are.
And if we had a long-term, we could offer it.
But we do, to make it easier. I know we do.
Yep. Thank you.
So if there are no questions on that, and then the next is the public hearing on budget? Sorry.
Do you need a motion for that, to approve?
It was, it's up to you guys. It was more just a, she just wanted to make sure there was this slight correction. I forget what it was.
Wasn't a dollar amount?
No, it didn't, it didn't, it just made sure that she, I think what happened was the dollar amount was correct. It was just the numbers were a little skewed, that was all.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, I know exactly what it was. It had to do with the, so originally, when she sent you the list, the list was divided by 184 days. But substitutes work 180 days, substitutes, it needs to be divided by 184, oh, four days. That's, that was the difference.
So somebody that comes in as a substitute teacher, works 30 days at the daily rate, and on the 31st day, they go to the bachelor one step, but it's 1/184th, and she had figured it as 1/180th? So that number down below at 257, 73 a day did change. So there's a financial amount that did change, so if you.
But the hourly didn't?
Right, no.
It was just, okay, hourly's the hourly.
So the final on Sarah's is that public hearing on budget is February 27th, 2020, coming up in a couple of weeks. So if there are no other questions on that, I'll move to. The next item is therapy emotional support dogs in schools. And by way of explanation, back in January, I was approached by Erin Doak, who's a school adjustment counselor at the Henry B. Berklin School. She is, what she lovingly refers to herself as a puppy mummy on the weekends. And there are a number of dogs that train to become therapy dogs or assistance dogs. And she started kind of cooking up in her mind this idea that it might be a good thing for Middleborough, and it might be a great idea for Middleborough if we had a dog. She started doing some investigations, she did some research. The folks in Hanover have therapy dogs and assistance dogs. Medfield, Easton, there are a number of communities. Foxborough just added one. And so she had this idea that she brought to me and herself and Megan Quirk, who's the Family Resource Director. And we sat down and talked for a while, and I heard her out, and I said, you know, I think, I would not have a problem moving this forward. I think it's a good idea, based on what you've said, based on what you presented and the reasons. And so I invited the chair to sit down, and we went down to the Berklin School and met with Mr. Thompson, the principal, the school adjustment counselor, Erin Doak, and Megan Quirk again. And the school committee chair heard what they had to say and everything they had to say, and the excitement that they have for a possibility of doing this and applying for a dog down the road. So we bring this policy before you this evening to have the first reading or first discussion of the possibility of having at least one initially, certainly a therapy dog in the school. And they have vetted this out through the faculty, and they plan on vetting this out in a faculty meeting. We've asked them to do that. And their plan is to come to our next meeting on the 27th to answer your specific questions about the program and about how it works. I would tell you that these dogs, the program that we're working with these dogs, are trained in prisons with appropriate prisoners that they've found that work well with the dogs. They train them very specifically. And then the dogs are released on the weekends to go out and go to malls and go to churches and go to soccer games and go to everywhere else. You may have seen them in the Middleborough community. There are a couple of puppy mummies in the community. We have folks like Jen Sclafani, who's in the community, who's, that used to bring the dog to church. And that's part of their training. And these dogs have to pass rigorous tests before they graduate, to the point where they become these therapy dogs. The dogs that don't graduate become very loving pets in homes and are given up for adoption to homes, very well-trained dogs, by the way. But this is an idea that comes before you this evening as a first reading for your initial discussions and thoughts and for anyone in the community or the public that would like to speak to the issue also. So there was a, there was an article in the Boston Globe, the timing of which was good. It was in there last Sunday. I believe it was Johanna Seltzer, who's a local, has done a couple of stories about, I think she did a story in Middleborough High School when it came out. And it was, seemed certainly favorable. She interviewed Jane DeGrenier, who's the principal of the center school over in Hanover, who I happen to do my CAGS degree with, and I had a chance to talk with her, and she's very supportive. I had a chance to talk to Matt Farren, who's the superintendent in Hanover, who is allergic to dogs, but said he gladly risked his life on a number of occasions to get a hug from the dog and talk to the dog. And he said, "The dog is as popular as Tom Brady wrapped in bacon" at the center school in Hanover. So, you know, and we've asked specific questions about dander, pet dander. So, you know, and we've, we've asked specific questions about dander, pet dander allergies and things such as that. And the responses that came back from school administration and councils were similar to, if a child has a peanut allergy, we, we make exceptions and we do all we can. So this is basically for the majority, the vast majority of students. And there may be students who, who because of allergies can't be close to the dog, but the dog would be there, so.
Yeah, so when we met, you know, we asked some questions, as superintendent mentioned, we did ask for Principal Thompson to have a conversation with the staff, to make sure there was buy-in from the staff, and also with the PTA to make sure there's buy-in from the community. Wanted to make sure that the policy that you guys have is the policy from Hanover, I believe.
Yeah, Matt Farren is the superintendent in Hanover, and he's also an attorney, J.D., and, and he developed this with his attorney and vetted it through the MAS, MAS-C. And this is the only policy of its kind that I could find online, and, and actually had a chance to communicate with him about this. And he said that it has been extremely well received. And if you read the article, which I can get your copy of, I don't have a clean copy, but I can send it to you, scan it to you as part of my communication to you tomorrow. The article in the Globe was, again, very favorable. Foxborough just approved it, Easton again, Medfield, Superintendent Medfield. I know he's a Tauntonite, and he said it's extremely popular. I have a nephew who works in the Framingham Public Schools, they have a, a high school therapy dog at Framingham High, and, and that has been highly successful. They're fairly new, last two or three years. There are working dogs that are in schools for students who are visually impaired, et cetera. And, but those are service dogs, this is something different, this is a therapy dog. So that's what we're looking to do through this policy.
And just one quick thing, before sort of our agenda hit, Bob Sullivan had asked to talk about this. So Bob, if you want to say anything, you're more than welcome to. And so that was before we, our agenda hit. Bob had some comments and wanted to talk about the therapy dogs, so I want to make sure that he has an opportunity because he was gonna come down and public comment, then I had asked Ann to write him back and say, well, we're including this on the agenda, so I could have a conversation.
Thank you, Ann.
No problem.
You may have seen the article, and when I read the article, I said, this is something our kids are gonna, would love. It was just so happened that you were working on it already, I think that's great. The only thing I, after listening to you talk about money, the only thing I was gonna, if it's successful and it's working out and it's meeting all the safeguards, I think it's Foxborough that's talking about having an in-house, which is another whole layer.
Right.
But I, I just think it's one of those things that so many kids would, would benefit, just having the dog around. And I think, I know I've always had a dog when I was a kid and still have a dog, and it's just, it's just something that... It's still a benefit, except for my grandchild gets licked by a dog, she's about in a rash, so she's gonna have to...
So that's one of the things we talked about, was we checked on the allergies the kids had, and there weren't really any that they could find. But by the same token, we didn't know how many parents were listing dog allergies, you know, thinking that there would be a dog in the school. So we wanted, we asked that they maybe do a little more checking on that for that piece, too.
But you were way ahead of me, that was great.
And we had, we had asked, and the chair, we had asked Erin Doak for some specific examples of how this might be of assistance, and how that might affect her day, because she would bring this, this dog would be her dog at home, and she would bring this dog to school every day. The dog would have a crate.
Thank you.
The dog would have a crate, and whenever she had something to do, the dog would go in the crate, trained to go in the crate, not make a noise. And if it does make a noise, it makes an issue with the school, obviously there's an exclusionary policy in here where we could, we don't want to kick the dog out, but you know what I mean. But she said, a perfect example was that morning. There was a particular second or third grade child who was having a little separation anxiety with the parent, coming back from a long weekend, it happened to be the Tuesday after the MLK weekend, and a little separation from the mom. And she said if, if that dog had been there, she would have probably walked right out with the dog and say, listen, can you help me walk fluffy down the hallway? And she feels that would have made a real difference in that instance, so. There are feelings back and forth, and, and I've known some folks, I had worked with a school psychologist who worked in this district and then moved over to Bridgewater Rainham, who was not a big fan of, of the dogs. We had a woman that used to, at the day after school, used to bring her dog into a beautiful golden retriever, the friendliest dog in the world, and, and then she was like, not in my office, please, please keep your dog wherever, but no. And so I understand that, too. But having been somebody like a lot of us who grew up with dogs, and I happen to have two yellow Labs at home, and they're therapy dogs for me, so, and we all have that experience.
Great.
Saying the policy here that these are for identified students, that that's what you benefit for. Excuse me, so what it would be is, from my understanding of this policy, is that they would be in a designated area where a student that was in crisis, or a student was socio-emotional, could go to. It's not to run around in the cafeteria or anything like that, exactly. It seems like it would be for identified students that this would be something to help them with separation anxiety or any other issues they may come about.
And you're right, the handler is with the dog at all times. So the dog is not loose at all, he's always, or she's always on a leash, and always with the handler, who has specific directions to that dog. The dog has specific behaviors that has to make eye contact, and the dog has, you know, put the head on the lap and things like that, and they're trained to do those things, so. And it's pretty well spelled out in this policy. And again, first reading, you may not have a chance to read through it, but it's, it's, it's a pretty detailed policy in terms of exactly what should be expected and, and what the potential is, certainly. But I think these folks are really excited about it, and I think at the next meeting you'll hear that level of excitement and anticipation that maybe at some point, because you have to apply for a dog, takes a while to get a dog sometimes. They're sort of, she's sort of hoping that, that she gets the dog that's living with her now on the weekends because it's a super little, little black lab, and it's a sweetheart of a dog. And, and so we will, we will see, but this is, this is your decision as school committee. And, but we'll try to give you every opportunity to hear from all sides, including the folks who want to really take this on, because it is a responsibility. She's not gonna get paid any extra for maintaining the therapy dog, there's no stipend for it, there's no, this is just something that she feels would really make a difference in the life of that school, and in the culture of that school, and the climate of that school, so.
Any questions? Hearing none, so you have before you the first reading. Just so everyone knows, we did, the policy committee did meet, and we had a discussion about this because we met right after a budget subcommittee meeting, because it's the same, too. I will tell everyone this, which is, as was mentioned, that Erin is in the middle of training a dog through the Needs Collaborative. She asked if it would, her, I think her hope more than anything would be to apply for that dog to be used for that. The conversation that I had with her was that I was fine with that after the second reading. Because at that second reading, she would come, explain to you all what was happening. If you approve the second reading, it's rarely, unless you ask the policy committee to look at something, it's rare that we change in the third reading. So that's why I wanted, I said as long as we got by that time, I was fine with that, and she agreed to that. And the superintendent was fine with that, too, so I just want to lay that out on the table for everybody. Yes?
I, I would suggest that we individually send you any comments on this policy.
Yep.
So that you can amass them together, so that during that second reading, if we feel strongly enough, we can move forward.
Yep.
Because I think that although we have a three, we can waive if we, I think this is something that at no cost could actually, we're always looking for these savings, this is like a savings in itself, that if we want to. But if there are things we want to tweak in this, I think we should, if we could get them to you?
I just want to make one clarification, okay, and just so everyone understands this. There is a cost to take a Needs Collaborative dog, that cost is about eight thousand dollars. And so what happens is that it is not a cost attributed to us. There, Erin's gonna raise the money. Now, I have given her some ideas and suggestions about where in town she could go to raise the money, which I have no problem with that, I would be more than happy to help out as an individual person. But again, this was not part of the school, so I just wanted to say that. I, I didn't want people to think there wasn't a cost, because the people at Needs would like sort of reimbursement for, obviously, the training and the piece going in, because what they're doing with the eight thousand is getting another dog and training another dog. So I, I did want to clarify that particular piece.
Okay. But it's, it's not gonna be cost to our budget.
Right.
But we're getting this huge benefit.
So unless anyone has any, Richie, you have another question?
I was just curious, is that a one-time cost, or...
Yes, one-time cost.
And, and obviously, understanding that the, the cost is not, as you're saying, to us, it's, it's to someone.
Right.
But, okay, thank you.
So the chair went into, then a motion to accept the first reading of this.
So moved?
Dory, second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, so we'll move on to the second reading at the next reading.
Just to close out, Mr. Chair, this email, and I, we have permission to share, from Matt Farren from, from Hanover. He says if you're interested, if anybody in Middleborough is interested, we would certainly welcome you to come visit and check out our pack of dogs, she calls them a pack, because they're two service dogs and a therapy dog. The service dogs do their job, and basically the kids and staff all know that they are working animals and are to be left with their handlers. The therapy dog, however, is more popular than Tom Brady wrapped in bacon with the kids, and probably more so with the grownups. I am highly allergic to dogs, and I have risked my own life several times to get some snuggles from that thing. Please let me know if this works for you, I'd be glad to help out. The therapy dog is a kind and gentle animal, and I believe all of them are trained in that respect, so.
This goes right back to when we talk about our, our district improvement, and we talk about the wellness of our community. Just, how much more can it really just jump out at you when I think of that?
Absolutely.
Next on the item is the school choice policy, the school, the subcommittee decided to scratch that after their meeting the other night, Tuesday, to continue on, to have more focus and to bring that to the twenty-seventh, the meeting on the twenty-seventh.
And just so everyone understands, the, I think it might have been dropped in the box today, so you could have seen it, but two things. One, there will not be three readings in that policy. Those changes are legally required, so we'll just be announcing the changes at the, the twenty-seventh meeting. We don't, we don't, we're not required to do three readings when essentially, so what happened was the Department of Ed just released a list of frequently asked questions very recently, which is the first time they've done so since choice came out. And we made sure that our policy fell in compliance with that. The other piece becomes, we needed, we needed to get that done before we, we establish a choice number for next year. So there's two things with that, we're probably gonna do that, and then at the first meeting in March, establish the choice numbers. So just, we're, we're gonna deal with that today, but I just...
Mr. Chair, when we talk about choice, I, when I go look at the, by the way, you can go to the state website, and you can look at the cherry sheets going back to two thousand and ten, when we were getting about forty thousand coming in, and now it was substantially larger, a bit of choice money coming into our, our community.
It's funding two or three positions.
Yes, it is.
So it has been good. And the final thing on my agenda is a stipend meeting, you already mentioned that, that we're, we're well on our way to negotiate the new stipends and some things that have changed over the years. Athletic director was part of that discussion in terms of some of the things. For example, we had a collaborative effort with the Hall Hockey Team, they provided a coach, we provided a coach. We're now on our own, and we only have a head coach, and really need an assistant coach there. So there's some adds there, and some things that we're gonna alter. The nurse position, the lead nurse position is obviously gonna be changed, morphed, because of the, the loss of the essential health grant, and some things there, and those will be decisions that will be made by the, by the policy subcommittee and recommended to the larger committee, hopefully within a month or so.
Yep.
Yeah, so. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for the superintendent? Then we'll move on to consent agenda, and I'll accept the consent agenda as written, with the exception of the Roger Williams field trip.
So moved?
Dory, second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair went into, then a motion to approve the Roger Williams field trip. We have to do that separately because it's an out-of-state field trip.
So moved?
Dory, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. MSBA update. I'll turn to you again.
I attended the construction meeting today for two and a half hours or so, as I do every Thursday. Today's meeting was focused on a little bit of the rain, a little bit of the weather that happened last weekend, which, which really affected some of the program, but they, they got, they got at it. There was a total loss to the Fontaine Brothers' trailer. A tree came down on top of it, crushing the heat and air exchange unit, and also sort of bent the frame of it. And the insurance company is gonna come in, pull out the doors, the windows, anything mechanical they can save, probably the carpet and everything else, pull out the furniture, and then they crush it on site, and demolish it, and then bring in a new one. That's how the insurance policy handles it. But it was a forty-foot tree that fell down on two trucks in the top of that unit. And we had a, the clerk of the works there sitting at his desk, and the things came right down on top of him. So it's kind of a scary, scary incident for him. I had a chance to speak with him Saturday morning early, when I stopped by to, to talk with him, and they were trying to put a tarp on top of it, and the wind was still blowing at probably forty, forty mile, forty-five miles an hour on Saturday morning. But in terms of the, they, they project to be about ten days behind or so, eleven days behind right now. And I know that the folks here that were at the meeting yesterday, we approved some change orders that sort of finished off the, the well system, if you will, the money involved in the well system. We certainly are thankful to the Pierce trustees for coming up with about a hundred thousand dollars last year for water discovery and well, well drilling. And this part, is part of the project, is to build the pump house, a variable-speed, forty-gallon-a-minute pumping station that will allow for us to water the fields. I would tell you that in the past, our bills for watering the fields at the high school have ranged from ten to twelve thousand dollars for July and August. So this money as part of the project will certainly pay for itself over the next four or five years. And where it's an investment, these fields are an investment, and they need to be kept up, so.
Mr. Chair, the project is approximately forty-six percent complete as of the end of last month. Contingency-wise, we're, we're doing well, we're about four percent into our, I'm sorry, we're four percent into our contingency with, if we approved everything that was on the list.
Yep.
The greatest thing we saw yesterday, and a couple of members were really smiling, was there was an item, I think that the contractor wanted thirty-six thousand dollars for, and ended up getting twelve.
Yes.
The, our team over there fights, fights, and fights for us, so something to be said with Compass and Christie and all the, the whole group over there.
Yep. We're very fortunate, and yesterday, Christie couldn't make it, but the owner of the company, Tim Bonifanti, did come down and, and interceded and did a nice job. We heard, heard a good deal from Angel yesterday, who's one of our designers that we don't hear a lot from. And she sort of took charge yesterday and really sort of stepped up, which was great. Bonnie's a little bit quieter, and Scott sometimes doesn't. His mouth is always open, let's put it that way. And he sort of was quiet yesterday, so it was great to hear from Angel. She's had a lot to do with some recent change orders, and she's our, sort of our pit bull in terms of those change orders, and has done a nice job, so. We're thankful for, for our OPM, we're thankful for our designer, and, and the project's going along well in spite of the rain, and, but we haven't had a tremendously cold winter or a snowy winter, so that's been good, too. So they're thankful for that trade-off.
And the policy's under budget, the, the project is under budget.
Great, Mr. Chair, one of the things that, when you think about change orders, you're like, what kind of change orders? One specific change order that was done was, the way it was originally designed, the gymnasium, to put things up and down in the gymnasium, you literally had to go with a key. Old school, it works. Problem is, is it was twelve sets of keys, twelve keys, you're gonna have to do one at a time. It would literally take you, what, fifteen, twenty minutes to probably put them all up or down? So it's, it, we, we had this controller already in the gymnasium, but we had to put controllers at every one of, we had to put, PLCs at every one of those units, and now, it was like a four thousand dollar additional piece for all those little controllers, but there's twelve of them. So little things like that, we added a closet where we have dead space, which is, anytime you can find a little extra space in a school, they'll, they'll utilize it. Things like that for, you know, five, six hundred dollars for that, but it was worth it. Seven fifty, that was seven fifty, I think, to put walls, doors, everything, and a light, and electrical.
And there was a nine hundred dollar unit for, for a carpet that, that the design team and the FFNE team at the high school decided that was the best carpet for that auditorium, absolutely gorgeous, that's the carpet they wanted. The problem is, it was gonna be the last run of that carpet, it was gonna be discontinued. So they bought an additional nine hundred dollars worth of carpet on a roll, so God forbid anything had happened to the carpet over the years, this would be attic stock. And now we have a closet to put it in, which is good.
So, yeah.
A carpet closet.
Things like that, that, but between the committee, Mr. DeRozes, who is our chair.
Absolutely.
Yourself, I mean, Hutch, I mean, there's a lot of people working on this on a day-in and day-out basis. We come in once a month, or a couple times, and approve things, but more or less, day in and day out, these guys are working on it all the time.
Yep.
And we're, we're fortunate because we're still looking at the November delivery date. Which is good, even with a little bit of a delay. They think they can pick things up a little bit if the weather holds out this, the rest of this winter. Just like if we can save a few more dollars on heating.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Anything else on that, everybody? Hearing none, again, policy update, we talked about the therapy dogs, the school choice will be, won't be a first read. And there'll also be a change in speaking at school committee meetings. It's an update from MASC, again, that will be a change. It won't be required three readings, it'll just be a change and we'll have that for you guys at the next meeting, okay? Next meeting is the budget hearing. The budget hearing will start at 7:30. What we'll do is we'll open the meeting at 7, we'll have, do a couple of things, but promptly at 7:30, I'll convene the budget and we'll go from there. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, chair went into then a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As our next meeting is the budget hearing at 7 o'clock, February 27th, I would motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous and thank you for watching, everybody. Good night.